I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Still moved?
It's been moved in second and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those. Okay, discussion items. School improvement plans and Dr. Gilman from which is going to start us off.
And I wish I would have put page numbers on there because it would have been better how to document camera, but the first thing we're gonna look at is the iReady diagnostic, which is the second page. And it's at the bottom. So this is just some trend data over the years and and what we're trying to kind of get back to is the two, two thousand eighteen nineteen. Numbers or even so. You can see from it two thousand fall two thousand eighteen, we had level one to start at thirty four percent, twenty first four percent at levels threes and fours, but by the end of the year, we are up to forty percent. As you can kind of see through the years, those numbers have increased, especially with the pandemic. Our fall scores are are higher. We had two thousand twenty one, we had fifty five percent at level one, two or more years behind. The staff did an amazing job lowering that down to thirty one percent and increasing our level threes and fours from ten percent to thirty two percent. And this year we're we're starting at forty nine percent of two or more years behind. And that's in reading and it's it's similar in math on the on the next page.
I ask a question.
Sure.
So I'd look at that data. And and it's and it trends, it doesn't matter what school I'm looking at, but you know, we we start off at this high number every fall and then we kick butt by the end, but then we go right. It's it's like we don't, it seems to me like we're not gaining ground over time. And I don't know if I'm just not looking at the numbers right, but how do we get to where we don't have such a return back to level one? Every single fall that we start school.
And part of that is you have new standards and a new grade level. So the other thing I've asked iReady over the last three, two, three, four years is that the data follows the student. And they continue to say that they're working on that. And what I mean by that is every year they give them a new typical growth and stretch growth score. And what I'm asking for is a trajectory for that student as they go through school so that data is not reset every single year, it's just added on. And then the new program that we do have will be like that. It will follow the student and the levels as they progress instead of resetting every year, which gives us more information. I think more valuable information compared to resetting every year. But this was an assessment that was recommended by LAP to start with and something that allowed us as as an elementary to have a common assessment to look at and dig into. It's not the best, I agree. Hopefully, the goal is, I mean, right now, if if I was, I've talked about this before. The triangle should look like this if you RTI triangle, so you you have you have your your tier three here where most of your kids are, and then you're getting smaller as you go up. Our triangle is actually upside down. And we're trying to trying to flip that.
One, one thing that and that and it happens, it happens to schools all over the country is what's called the summer slide. Kids leave school, you know, they've improved, they go through the summer, they're not really doing anything academic, maybe not even reading. Even though we do a lot of encouragements and books home and they do, they lose, they do lose ground. That's where you see some of that balanced calendar man, that balanced calendar, you know, there's a grant that's been out, kind of you people could do it for a trial. And that spreads the school year out more, so you don't have those really long breaks. It it's like July off, a longer Christmas, you know, winter, mid winter break, you add more breaks in and spread it out. Some people go, it's year round school. Well, kind of, but year round school was was really designed so that you could run multiple tracks of kids and fit more kids into a building than you might be able to normally. But it is really to balance the calendar so kids aren't out for really long stretches of time. But it is, we've been in this school calendar paradigm for I mean, forever. And so, so you know, there's districts around us that are piloting White Swan, some of those districts, just because they see the same things and it's to try to not lose ground, take two steps forward and what looks like two steps back every single year.
So would it, now that you mentioned that, because that was kind of my follow up question when this was all done.
I read mine.
I I appreciate. You know, is that something that we need to look at or educate ourselves or do research on?
So Matt and I talked about it at the beginning of this year. Or actually, it was probably last last spring, like, oh, is this something we should do, but we just felt like with the strategic plans and the other things, let's not do it this year, maybe it's something we look towards to start doing, because it is like you do, if you apply for the grant unless it changes, you're doing like a year of study. So we just didn't feel at that time, we could take it on this year. But I think it's something that's probably, I mean, it's there because it's something that's gonna probably come along. They're better for kids. They just, you know, there's things they're learning towards the end of the year, they haven't had enough repetition for it to really stick. They leave, they go to higher grade level, higher standards, they've lost some of that. So, you know, I think it's something down the road, I think we need to probably consider, at least look into it. And it does. You know, of course, it impacts families, but it's got to be about what's best for the kids. So.
I I had heard at one time that you looked into that because we knew someone that taught at Little Things School. And Pasco considered it.
Yeah, I don't know how many have actually done it versus study it, but I'm sure some of that information will be coming out.
The reasons were different. And so in Pasco's case, they had a huge amount of growth in a short period of time. At one point, Pasco High School was the biggest high school in the state with over five thousand students. So they were growing so rapidly that they were trying to do in in schools sometimes do it, you'll see him do your year round dual track where they're cycling students through, you know, on different calendars to try and serve the needs of students because the schools just aren't big enough to fit that many bodies. So that was one. The state came out with this exploratory grant and OSP has taken a stance that has said we're piloting these year round schools. And one of the, one of the ideas on it is it is it Kevin Gilman talked about this idea last, last week about effect size. And so in these studies that that he reads, they do these meta analyses, which they do statistical calculations and they say these actions have this type of statistical effect if we do that. Summer school doesn't have a huge statistical effect, yet school systems run that as as an intervention. Right? And so the conversation is if we have year round schools, can we frame interventions differently? Or not year round, a balanced calendar is what they're calling it. So you have, you have these shorter stints of school with, you know, like week long or two week long breaks where you can actually run intervention cycles and you can get feedback quicker. And so you close the feedback loop and so you don't get grades at the end of semester. You do two weeks on or three weeks on. And you say, hey, this student's behind on that this unit, let's catch them up, we have a couple of weeks to catch them up. And so that feedback loop is a faster cycle there and so allows a system or a school to adapt fairly quickly. The way we're running it now, we get to the end of the semester or a quarter trimester, kid gets a grade. There's no break there that the kid can go back and correct their grade. So it's, you know, one shot, if you don't, if you don't make it, you don't make it, right? And so the push there is to try and do more of these formative assessments for learning that we're offering kids multiple opportunities to meet a standard. It's not just, you know, like, I don't think I would be driving an automobile if I couldn't take the driver's ed test more than one time. Right? But that's the way that operates in school. You have one chance to demonstrate your proficiency. If you don't do it, then you get an F, right? And so it's binary in that way, either you pass or you're gonna fail. Right? And so to allow students multiple opportunities to reach standard as part of the conversation too. But I don't know if I answered that question. Is balanced calendars are something we're looking into? Of course, that has to be. All that would be a conversation with our labor partners, primarily the PEA. Right? And to say, does this work for our teacher practitioners and or and or how do we get to that? What does this look like? A lot of people pre, you know, a lot of teachers like three months off in the summer to do what they want. Other teachers would like to take longer breaks in the winter and maybe fly somewhere where it's warmer, right? And so that's part of that, you know, that whole equation too is how are we working with our labor partners and our parents in within the community to establish a schedule that benefits students, parents, teachers, everybody?
I'll send you all, there's a Q and A document from OSP, I'll just email it to you guys, you can look at it. And it has an example of what a calendar would look like.
I had sent you guys one as part of a weekly update. I don't, I can't remember if it was Ordin or somebody over on the other side of the state who had established one as kind of a model. And I said, this is kind of what this looks like. And so you could probably go back through and find it. You know, if you email search a balanced calendar and and kind of pretty good idea of what it what it would look like.
Another question that just came to mind, when when these kids take a test, I'm gonna start with third grade. So as a third grader, they take the fall assessment, is that assessment based on what they should know? Fall of their third grade year or what they should know?
A combination of both, it's an adaptive test.
Okay.
So as kids miss problems or are correct, you know, they get the right answer. It will increase or it will decrease to find that level and then put them on a on a instructional path. So when they're practicing, they're practicing specifically the needs that they that were discovered during that diagnostic test.
So the test can get harder or easier as a kid takes it.
Yeah.
And then it says it pinpoints, this is what this kid knows and this is what this our student, this is what the student knows and this is what they don't know. Because we gave them multiple questions of that same grade and they couldn't answer it and or they could answer it and they progressed to more difficult.
Yeah, well, it was keep adjusting, keep adjusting and then go through the different domains. Because for every kid that depending on if it's algebraic or geometry, that domain, they might do better in one domain compared to another, so, but it is adaptive through those domains. And then with with the math, I already math diagnostic at the fall two thousand eighteen was twenty nine percent and then the spring was only nine percent. And then, like I said, ending, we started with twelve percent in the in the grid levels three and four and ended at forty nine percent. So that's really what we're trying to do is get it down to single digits, double digits again, because we were able to do it once, we should be able to do it again. Any questions about the iReady data?
So this, I mean, this, we're going back four years at this point with the data, so not all of it's COVID loss.
No.
And we talked about last week, we talked about number sentences, has anything else changed with the math curriculum? I know we have a new reading curriculum, the math curriculum to make this impact.
We have not updated the math curriculum. Jody, last week talked about number talks. So another thing that we we talked about or that we've introduced at all the grade levels is word routines. And the main real goal of those word routines and kids working through those word routines is exposure to work to problem solving. But also the the big thing is for kids to make sense of the problem. And so that's something that was introduced last year, started to implement, we have it. I have number talks three times a week and then the word routine two times a week. And that that during that math block, that's ten to twenty minutes of that math block. So what we're trying to do is be very intentional about the time that we have and what we're doing.
But it's the, it's in addition to our current curriculum.
It's in addition to the current curriculum.
What about homework in the elementary level?
Do you want my personal opinion on homework?
Well, your opinion or what you're doing, either way.
The expert. As as a as a teacher, I I did not assign a lot of homework. Reading was the number one piece and that is something I think that all parents can do, you can read to kids and you can have kids read to you. I did not assign a lot of homework to be to go home and done and then returned. Not that I didn't think the kids could do it, but some of it are the habits that you're creating when they go home and do that and there's not the support. Or intervention of a teacher or a parent that's working with them. Going home and just practicing something they're not quite skilled at yet. I don't think necessarily improves their ability to do it, especially if there's not support at home. Just kind of where I stand on homework. So as a teacher and and as a principal, I've there are things that are in your circle of control and there's things that aren't. I've really tried to not focus on the barriers that I can't control, but really try to address the barriers that we can't control in in the school system. And I might be wrong, so. I don't have all the answers, I'll tell you that, but I am trying to find them. So the next we'll go to the two thousand twenty one SBA data. Six? Any questions about this before I go into it? Okay. So something that really kind of stood out to me are, one, the math scores. That was one area. Some discrepancies between male and female. Hispanic and and white with the ethnicity. The ELL and non ELL and low income and non low income. You can see that the percentages are quite higher in those in those categories. Depending on which demographics you're looking at, but overall, the math was lower than ELA. On the next page, you have the percentage of students meeting at those grade level standards. Now, we took this in the fall of last year for the two thousand twenty twenty one school year. So this is why third grade is not on there. So you have the fourth grade ELA, fifth grade ELA, fourth grade math, and then the fifth grade math.
I'll ask Jody the same. We see the, at least the way I'm reading it, maybe I'm wrong, we see a really significant drop between fourth and fifth grade proficiency. Can you explain? That I I I can't figure it out by looking at it, but I don't understand why.
Jody and I both have that same question.
So there's three of us that.
Yeah. That's something we're continuing to to look at. In in math, specifically in math, I just because that's where I I taught, my whole career was in fifth grade. That grade level is the only grade level where they introduce a concept and there's also mastery in the first year. And that's multiplication of fractions. And then also the introduction of division of fractions. So they're expecting the kids to get that introductory conceptual knowledge from the start to the finish. It also is the kind of the capstone for elementary where when they sit down to problem solve, they have to decide if they're adding, subtracting, multiplying or dividing. But on top of that, add in fractions and decimals. So you're not just looking at whole numbers, but you're also expanding that to the fractions and the decimals. So the DOK level is is significant, the rigor is significant. We are exploring some some different options to address that, which I'll get to. I kind of have, what I have is going through the data and then I have some conclusions that I I drew from this. And then last week I talked about some of the strategies that we're gonna use, so I'm not gonna dig into that. And then ending with, I have three questions that I'm going to be asking the staff throughout the year and then our problem of practice. So it might address, I I think it's gonna address some of those questions. So the spring of last year, you have the general scores there. Again, we see a male, female discrepancy, we also have ethnicity discrepancy. The non English and the low income compared to the non low income. We still see the same trend between fourth and fifth grade. In in ELA and and then math. Third and fourth grade made pretty good gains, especially in math from the fall to the spring, which I actually kind of liked that format of having the SP in the fall and in the spring, it was kind of logistically, it was a little difficult, but at least you're have some comparisons, you know, throughout the year. Growth data hasn't been published yet. Which is the next section. The last growth data that they submitted or was available to us was two thousand eighteen nineteen. What we want though is on this page right here. And my concern was with the discrepancies between those different demographic groups. If you notice the growth, especially in math in the eighteen nineteen year, it didn't matter the demographics. The growth was very, especially in math. We're hoping to get to that with the ELA now that we have a consistent curriculum that we're working through and consistency through the through the building. Even to the point where the research questions that they're asking, the lessons themselves are mirrored through the different grade levels. So those kids are really digging into the content, not having to worry about different formats or different styles. But this is, this is the goal for my staff is to get back to, doesn't matter what demographic it is, that the growth is the same. So this is the conclusions that I've kind of drawn and staff have when our leadership team got together and looked at the plan going into this year and create, looking at the goals and and the activities that we're gonna do for this year. There was some, there was learning loss, we all know that. It seems from the the limited data that we have here, math was hit hard. I would need more data kind of to really be able to say without a doubt that here are the reasons. Our current second graders. So if you take our current second graders, their kindergarten year was all virtual. So we are seeing an impact with those students, especially with our foundational skills. Our third graders, their last third of kindergarten was lost, which is in kindergarten, really the time they take off as readers. They were in virtual setting all the first grade, second grade, what we saw in our PLCs was basically academically almost going back to kindergarten, especially with like phonemic awareness and the phonics. This year though, it's different. These kids that are coming through the system that have been even in there for a year, our first grade teachers are even making the comments. And even our pre-assessments and post-assessment scores, our pre-assessment scores are higher than what they were with the same content last year. So the trend is they're, they are recovering and recovering quicker than I would say I I thought. So that is a very, it's a positive thing and which means if they're coming in better prepared, that those teachers are able to take them even even farther in that school year. And we're seeing that through throughout the grade levels, but specifically at those grade levels where the the foundational skills were not really solid. Now trend, pre pandemic, there are some things that are continuing, so if you start to go back and look at those demographics and the scores and you start to pull out some of that out of the, some of that data out. If you look at our ELL students, there's still a struggle with that. And then if you dig even deeper, if you look at the male, female, and then you look at the ethnicity and then you look at the ELL or non ELL, our Hispanic males are having a a difficult time with the SBA. And knowing this, I was in another district that we were able to break it down specifically for writing with males. So then we started doing research and pulling in some practices that were addressing that particular area. And I'm following that same model because it was successful before. And that's part of the reason why we're bringing in the thinking strategies. Because the thinking strategies, like I talked about before, are tools that those kids can use and then apply to the various situations that they'll have to address. Not only on the WIDA, I'm sorry, I tried to avoid the acronyms. Yeah.
It's the world class. Yeah, it's the, it's the the test our ELL students take to show proficiency. World class.
So the three questions that I've I have up in our PLC room. And I've sat down with our instructional coach, we've gone through this, we've looked through that data, data and kind of our our book study that we did with visible learning, the effect size with visible learning, and this is why I'm sticking to it and and the research behind it is one in forty four hundreds, it's tremendous. And I'm trying to learn as much about it as I can and the staff is trying to learn as much about it, there is total buy in with it right now and it it's it's powerful to see the work that they're putting in along with using a new curriculum. I want to give them credit for that because I'm not in there day in and day out, putting the work in and making the adjustments and looking at the data and making more adjustments. And and that's what needs to be done. But the three questions that we have coming into this year that I'm asking during PLCs are how are you going to make it clear to students? The expectations. Because if they don't know the expectations, it's hard to reach those expectations. And that's part of visible learning, that's what visible learning is. Teacher clarity is seventy five hundred, so it has a high effect size. How are you going to make it clear to students? Part of visible learning is the metacognitive awareness, that's the students doing reflection on how they're doing. And people have always said, well, what about kindergarten or kids? I've watched kids, kindergarten kids here recently be able to tell you their power goals and reading. So kindergarten kids can do it. It might not be the degree of fifth grade where they're able to tell me their research project and their evidence, but they know their power goal, that's a start. If if they know I have to know my letters, they know that's part of that metacognitive, metacognitive awareness which has a sixty nine hundredth effect size. What else is part of teacher clarity? Target, targets and success criteria, which we worked on all of last year, what else is part of that? Rubrics. Students using rubrics, students scoring each other, students referring back to that rubric to judge how they're doing, going back to their metacognitive. To judge how they're doing, going back to their meta cognitive awareness. I watched second graders yesterday, which is part of this new curriculum, which again, I'm going to say thank you for. Because this was not evident previously. They had the rubric, the teacher had the rubric on chart paper. The students just got finished partner reading. And. You should have saw how many hands wanted to go into author's chair to read. And what they did is they had to follow the rubric, which then helps them to write a summary later. But they were doing it. Not writing yet, but verbally. Introducing their topic, introducing the author. Selecting a piece of evidence from the text. What supports that piece of evidence? They had to say words, pictures, text features. And and then the class would go through that rubric and they would score that student based on that four point rubric. Well, that's visible learning. Student knows where they're at. They know there's a rubric, there's your expectation. That's teacher clarity. It all combined together and that's where we're trying to go. The next question I have is how will you increase discourse? Discourse has an effect size of eighty two hundreds as collaborating with students, that students asking questions to each other. Students putting their heads together and trying to solve problems. And a little a question on top of that, well, how will students discuss the content? And then the the last question is how you or students provide feedback? Because it's not just the teacher providing feedback. Now that you have rubrics and you have exemplars that students are looking at. Students can start providing feedback to other students because peer tutoring has has a high effect size, which are students working with other students. Those are the three questions that we're going to emphasize this year. Which then have a high effect size. Our problem of practice. Which we also learned from our visible learning book is. Most eighty percent or more of our time in education across the country is spent at surface level learning. They don't go deep enough. You're you're asking, well, why doesn't that transfer from the spring to the fall? We haven't gone deep enough. It's not ingrained in them yet. It's just at the surface, so then it's just lost. So our problem problem of practice is how do we move students from the surface level to deeper. Learning so that there's true understanding independence, which I used to even when I was teaching, tell my kids. We need to take the training wheels off. We can't have the training wheels on on top. We have to see if you're gonna ride the bike. And. That's our goal because. We can, we can sit around and we can help kids all the time, but when they sit down and take the S B A test, there's nobody there. They have to be able to select their tools and and be able to apply them independently. And that and that's the goal. And then I'll just, if you, I have a quote that I'll I'll end with and then if you guys have questions and we can. So this comes out of that book. The problem lies not with surface learning per se, but rather with failing to move students into the deeper literacy learning. But how? How do we fix this? By equipping them with the tools and affording the opportunity to do so. And here are the tools that are listed. Concept mapping. Which are thinking maps. Discussion and questioning. Mantic cognitive strategies and then reciprocal teaching, which is another instructional strategy. We're not quite quite there yet. Our staff has voted on. The strategies that they would like to use in the future. And that is one of them. So.
It's similar to peer tutoring. But it's different. So you have one student teaching another student a concept and vice versa.
Similar to Jigsaw, Jigsaw is another one we can, we've probably all done that where you each take a piece of article, you read it and you come back together and you discuss it. You're teaching the other people in your group, your section. So similar to that. And I know that the data is what it is. It's like football. We say film doesn't lie. I believe data doesn't lie. But this is the direction that we're going in and I'm I'm using. Up to date research, the research is available to us and. Kind of just, that's what's driving our decisions right now.
Questions? I have a concept and. These kids sit down to take these assessment tests. How confident? And I think we asked this, I think I asked a question last year too, but I forgot. But how confident are that they're giving their best effort to answering these questions without? I mean, you don't have the bubble form anymore. It's a little more technologically advanced than when than I took it, but how do we know that these kids are putting their full effort into taking these assessments? And how true can these numbers?
With the I ready assessment specifically. Or the S B A.
All of the above.
Motivation is a piece of that, I believe. But preparedness. Is the key to that. I think the better prepared kids are going into it, the more knowledge they have. For example, one area that we're kind of exploring is in I ready, there's a thing called standards mastery. Which are six questions that are specific, a mini assessment that's specific to a standard. But that mini assessment and those six questions are all S B A style questions. And what do I mean by, I'm I'm not saying teach to the test. Because I don't think it's possible with this one. But I also listened to web, which is develop the D O K levels, which the test is based off of. And I've seen it because I've done high high stakes, this high stakes test. I administered the high state test I taught and and we, in my class, they took the S B A. And I watched kids that I knew understood how to to multiply, we'll say, multiply three digit by two digit. But as soon as that question. Changes to a different format. That they haven't been exposed to before. Like web says, that increases the D O K level dramatically. Just exposure. Not even the content or the concept, just exposure. So one thing that we're trying to do is I'm talking about preparedness is giving them the tools that they need. One of them is exposure. And the standards mastery that's in I ready goes all the way down to second grade. It's also gonna be part of that where I talked about how to increase discourse and discussion. Because a lot of the S B A questions are about reasoning. More than one right answer. And looking at and analyzing what others. The multiple choice that's there and determining if that way or that strategy is correct. And I believe the only way you can really do that is by having discourse in class. Putting it in front of them, having conversations about it. Exploring those. Having them expose them to those style of questions so that when they they sit down to those tests, they're confident and. Comfortable. Taking it.
Kevin, you explained D O K.
Depth of knowledge. So it's like the rigor, the level of question hits up. So there are different levels, the questions are scaffolded at. So you can tell. How difficult the question is and where the students at. But what he, what he's talking about too is some of that trying to. Foster that kind of academic stamina, if you will. So that students can actually work through that and part of that's trying to drive, drive discussions deep. And so when I was in school, there's an author named Mike Schmoker and he he calls it the Crayola curriculum. And oftentimes kids were given activities to do. That weren't as rigorous. And so what we're doing is not only teaching, but looking at driving that follow up, those follow up exercises really, really deep. So students really do have to think and. Collaborate with their neighbors and talk about and justify their thinking. And so when they do get on a test, I believe that every student wants to do well.
I do too.
And if if they don't, if they're just clicking through the, they don't know, they don't know the question or they don't have that stamina built up. They're so exhausted from trying to think. So, yeah.
Or or they're just overwhelmed.
Yeah.
So persevering through a problem that maybe they could solve, but they. Haven't seen it that way before. That perseverance, but I believe I think some of that perseverance or some of that commitment to doing their best. Sometimes as kids get older up into maybe have their like, I've already taken this test, I didn't pass it. Why am I gonna try again? Like, I'm just, you know, I think that's some of the habits, but I think for the most part. Ninety nine percent of kids, they they're trying to do their best they can.
It's it's changed quite a bit. If you think back, or at least when I think back to my experience. We did like the green eggs and ham unit. We did around this time of year, the. Mayflower Plymouth Rock and you had maidens and pilgrims and you had little hats with buckles on them, right? Stone soup. Yeah, I mean, there's a number of different things that we would do that those actually got cut out with the standards movement. Some of it unfortunately, and some of it maybe for the betterment of students. So when we talk about the level of rigor. At P H S. That actually we're working at scaffolding it down. Now math is an interesting question too. Director Riley, you would ask about that. Kevin's been harping on us for years and year, a few years now about this curriculum illustrative math. Because he thinks that actually if we implement illustrative math, we actually will see a bigger, bigger bang for the buck at the elementary level. I don't know.
I have a question of what you just said about scaffolding down the rigor of the high school.
So if we, so let's say that we want students to end calculus. Right? That isn't just by chance. We don't just have full classes of calculus by chance.
They don't have any classes of calculus.
Yeah. So if we really want those classes to be packed out. We have to kind of backwards map, understanding by design. So we say, here's the design. We want students to end here. So where do they have to be in middle school? So then what what do we have to expose them to elementary school? And so we build it down so that when they do get into high school, it's not, well, we have a handful of kids who actually. They're well beyond their peers, but there's only three of them. And so that class is only three. It's establishing some intentionality about what we're teaching, pushing students. He talked about that, these stretch goals. That we're trying to push students to do a little bit more, a little bit more.
When do we introduce fractions and decimals, not multiplying and dividing, but just as the concept, but great.
Fractions, actually, that they're introduced through shapes early on in primary, but really introduced in third grade.
I think last year I asked you, what? What would you need to to reach your goals? And I think your answer was more time. That would that be the same answer for this year or what? More more money, more? Everything, smaller class sizes, more prayer prose, interventionist? All of it?
Well, I. I think. One thing that's is going out are some of the things you've already done. I like I brought up the the curriculum, reading curriculum. You you have, you have to have a core to work off of. And it has to be a research based core. Is it gonna be perfect? No, because none of them are. They all have holes, but already what we've seen. And what is expected is beyond what we were doing previously. So that you guys already addressed. I brought up the R T I, the response to interventions last week. The language is kind of changed on that. It's now multi tier system of supports. And because they're bringing in social, emotional and and attendance and some of those other things that could have impacts on on education. But but going into that direction and just looking at the effect sizes, I, and this could be wrong. Somebody can tell me if it's wrong. But at this point, that's what I'm I'm. Mainly going by is if it has a high effect size, I'm gonna do as much as I can to figure out what it is and. At some point, we might come to you and go, we we need some help with this, like. I don't have the capacity to. To introduce it to the staff or to provide P D to the staff on on some of some of those concepts. So in the future, I think it's it's probably. Some of those specific areas. And. What we're all trying to do is to become as intentional as possible. Because there isn't enough time to not be intentional. So. That's why you're starting to see common language between the buildings, like we're all hitting number talks. Part of that reason is because we saw last year going through the P L Cs and looking at our data, not at the end of the year or the mid year. But unit to unit, the the number sense was so low. And that's why we're hitting it hard this year. Kind of bringing back and really going. What can we get rid of and be more intentional with? That has. A bigger impact. And that's been the big shift. I I talked last week about shifting from guided reading groups to strategic grouping based on kids' needs. And then addressing those. And that's a, that's been a huge mind shift change because. The kids are moving. So they're having to change those groups quite often because the kids are moving, but that's a good issue to have than a stale group. Which I've seen. So. Keep asking questions. That's that would be another one. And the other thing I, you know, would like to say is. I I think our teachers are working hard. There's not a teacher I don't think is trying to put their best effort out there either for with the knowledge that they know they have, just like the students. A strategic plan, which is being worked on, I think will also help with direction. But these, some of these issues are big issues that are gonna take a lot of minds. We have to put, just like we're asking kids to do to solve some of these problems, some of, we're gonna have to put a lot of heads together to to figure that out and I'm I'm hoping the board will be a part of that. To come up with solutions and. Maybe even look at some research going forward on some of these things. To help guide that direction. So I guess that'd be my biggest request. A partner with us, because we don't, we don't have all, we don't have all the answers, but we're trying to figure them out.
Which we appreciate.
Are you hopeful that in two years you can reach the goal, the seventy? I mean, that's a, that's a big increase, seventy to seventy five percent. Goal.
We've talked, we talked about. We have this goal, we we said it before the pandemic and we've chose to to stick with it. We want to have high expectations as well. We want to have high expectations for ourselves, high expectations for the teachers and which ultimately. And I don't know if you guys know this or not, but it it starts with this goal here. Then my grade levels are creating goals, then individual teachers create their student growth goals, which is tied into their evaluation. Which now is creating goals for kids. So do I want to change? Not necessarily.
So Jesse Wilson was scheduled to go next. She has a family emergency tonight. So we have two options. We can kind of work through that Indiana and I can. Help kind of go through that, or we were talking about having a special board meeting. On Friday for the purpose of secure approving out of state travel for the security officers. She might be able to present via Zoom on on Friday, if that's an option. So either we can try and go through it tonight and if there are any questions, we can ask them of her or we can table that and she can present on Friday, whatever the board would like.
Can we table it to move it with the high school and middle school?
We can do that too.
I'd rather do that. I don't.
Okay, yeah.
It's my personal opinion, I mean, Friday.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I won't know till tomorrow, but I'm pretty sure I can't do Friday.
Yeah, so. That would be my recommendation.
Yeah. All right.
Well, that means Jody's up.
So I have a question not related to the student improvement plans, but to you being cold, is your HVAC not working at heights, the new HVAC? And what's?
Eyes are starting to twitch. When all you have to say is heights and construction. The next few days. It depends on the day and the room. It really does. My office. My my personnel office was cold today, and so I took a picture because they all think I, I'm gonna make a. Rude comment to this room, but these men think that I'm lying, so I took a picture of it. Rude comment to this room, but these men think that I'm lying, so I took a picture of it and I sent it to them. It's like, it's cold. And it was sixty-two. It's cold. It gets cold in my office, and so I have this little heater and I'm like, oh, and um, but the rest of the heater is, the rest of the office is fine. And then we had, I texted them today because we had a room that was really cold. And so, yeah, I don't.
It's, it's some of the classrooms, right?
There, I do have a classroom here or there, so it's, it is, but they're working on some stuff. It is.
Are they being responsive and, is it the contractor, is the HVAC? I mean, this, it's, this should work.
There's still, I don't think it's been punch listed yet.
It hasn't, because they're not done with it. I mean, we are, they, how about this, they are very responsive when I say I'm cold. Or today, when I text them and I said, hey, I've got a classroom that's really cold, um, they immediately, what cla- what classroom? And that they go, they they do. So for that, it is. Yes, I'll tell you what, they're all.
See, it's kids that need coats that are like in those cold classrooms.
We have kids that need coats. We're working on, um, actually, we talked to um. The Westbit and Fire. And they contacted, they said that they were gonna have a point person at Witstrand, and they needed to know if we need a point, like, we have a point person here. That we're gonna actually give them a list of coats, because I was just, I just had a student that asked me if he could go outside, and I said. There's gonna be.
Friday, right?
Yeah, yes, and so we're anyway, but he couldn't, like, he was in shorts and a T-shirt, and he was like, can I go outside? And I was like, ah, no. Like, where's your coat? And he's like, um, and so it was, he doesn't have one, so we're just giving him one, like, just get you one, like. I send you outside in a T-shirt, because it is cold. You're right, it's cold in my building, sometimes, sometimes, it depends on the room. My, um.
Cold, I mean, is everything else pretty?
Uh, yeah, I think that's, it depends, it really does depend. I mean, they're not. It's not the same room every day, you know, it's. I feel like I could build a, a school right now, but every now and then I don't understand it, and the HVAC system, I have no idea. How it, we have all those big things on the roof, you'd think that we'd be good to go. But it causes my eye to twitch, so. The idea of construction at heights right now. Okay.
What is FR percentage?
Free and reduce.
Okay, thank you.
I was like, oh no, I don't know. Okay. Alright, so. Um, I'm gonna go through this kind of quickly, if that's. Oh, great, okay, um, this makes me nervous, so I'm just gonna kind of give you the, I did make a mistake, I was noticing that. If you look at the twenty twenty-one school year and the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, they're the exact same percentages, so that's not true. So the twenty twenty-one, the twenty twenty and the twenty twenty-one school year um is wrong. So I'll send you an updated correct form, Diana, and I send it to you guys too, if you wanna, but. But to kind of go back with um, this kind of. Oh, I'm sorry, it's like the third page. Should have also put.
That they program some.
Yes, it says programs and characteristics at top. So this just kind of gives an overview of heights. Oh, yeah, so we have the um. On the second page, this is going to student enrollments. And all that kind of, the breakdown of that, and then the breakdown of the student enrollment. Of what um everything is. And so if you look at the iReady data, um, this is the beginning part is the reading data. And that first part is wrong, uh, but if you look at the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year and the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Um, we're kind of seeing the same thing where we end on a high. Um, and then we fall back. And so. And it's been pretty consistent. We do have, I will say that. It, it doesn't say it here, but third grade usually makes the largest growth, um, is what. Is what we were seeing, is that they have the um, the largest growth. And the fourth and fifth grade are usually about seven, the same. In fact, I think this, this last time, this last year, they were almost identical within one or two percentages off. Um, what we're seeing is phonics is actually our biggest. Hurdle that we're going through right now with our um readers, and so we've actually started a. Um, and what, I, I'm gonna back up just as, I'm gonna kind of get on a side note, is one of the great things that is happening at height or at. Um, classroom school district in the elementary world is that you have three principals that are meeting together every other week. And having kind of our own PLC. And the benefits of that is being able to say, hey, what, what are you doing? And so. I'm competitive enough that I can say to Kevin, um, what are you doing? Like, what, what's going well? Like, because I want to beat him, and I mean that lovingly and like. You know, professionally, like, I want, my scores need to beat his, you know, so. What are you doing that I can copy? Um, or? Take on, and so also, but to be consistent too throughout, it shouldn't be a lottery, uh, educational lottery. Um, and so one of the things that he has done is that he used um Hagerty. And that helps with, and so Hagerty is more of a K-two. And so what's the same program is for three-five is called Bridge the Gap. And so we actually have taken that on because phonics is such a struggle for our students. Is that we, for intervention. Our intervention uh teachers are doing these twenty minutes, basically ten minutes of. Um, bridge the gap, because it's a quick intervention, and then ten minutes of Orton Gillingham. Which is more hands-on, it's actually we use it for the dyslexia. But it's just good. Just good. Stuff. So they do twenty minutes and then they flip kids, because that way the intervention time. Um, the kids can go back and do their toolkits with their teachers for the ARC program. So we're able to see more kids, and it's quicker, and we're able to see some progress. So that was what we have really um. That is what has stood out for. The majority of our students is the phonics part. And um, so we're able to do that, and plus, if you look at, and again, I know that Kevin has said this, our third graders have been impacted. Quite a bit because kindergarten, they went, they only made it to March, and then they were remote, and so those were their.
That's our group overall, and it's overall the state, the second, well, the third graders now are the. They struggling the most because of that.
Yeah, so we're.
Lot more catching up to do.
Mm-hmm, and so we're really targeting them and um. I, we have a great third grade team, and I, and that's a strong team at heights, and I'm really, like, they could, they can do it, so. Um, so anyway, so that's kind of where our reading is, but if you look at only nineteen percent of overall students. And it's what, sixty kids? Roughly thirty, seventy kids um that are on grade level. And so we have a lot to. Hey? Um, and we are seeing, and truly, like, we, you asked, you asked last year, or not last year, last week, are you seeing the ketchup or, you know, and. Um, Jesse was able to talk about that because we did have dinner, and we were like, you know, the problem is that they're not that um retention of the knowledge. Okay? So if you look at math, um. I do not believe I messed up on this one. You'll see the twenty twenty-one school year, um, they actually started out that, what's interesting about that. Um, data in the fall is that they took the iReady at home. So I know that we weren't sure how. How much help they got versus if it was individually done. But the biggest um. The biggest thing that is the most noticeable is the amount of red that has decreased. And so we did this, the same thing, you can see the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. The red was decreased, but then if you look, and that was in the springtime, and if you look at where we're at now. Over half our kids are at least two grade levels or below for math. And so that's um. And that's where um. Oh, here's that number of students of students, um. We need to, that's where our, and we did the same thing that Kevin or Witstrand does, is three days of number talks. Two days of word problems. Some of our teachers are more comfortable with word problems than others. Um. And that's where our instructional coaches come in, and she's been able to help. With that, um, because she does have a strong. Background on that, okay? And so then if you go to the next page, we have our EL instruction, and we started um a new, it's EL achieve. We started that last year that they got trained on, and so this will be our first year of really using it, and so we'll see where we're at. Our area of need is the writing. Is that was what the, and we didn't have anyone exit this last year. So on the next page, you'll see the SBA scores from last year, and this was the SBA in the fall, or not fall, excuse me, spring. And if you look, um, so this was, they're not good. And this was where our PLC was really able to come into together for elementary because. It's, we did not, Witstrand and Heights were different. And so we were able to look at, and this is what I did with our site, our site date. As the, all the teachers, they were able to see their scores, we were able to look at heights. And then surrounding areas that were similar to demographics, and really kind of have a discussion about that data. And what does this data show us? And where to go from there, you know, because nobody, I mean, truly, like, we're all thinking that we're doing the best we can. And we can't keep doing what we're doing because it's, it's not working. And I think that that was one of the things, and it, you know. We, we say some, we say about ARC, you know, like, how grateful we are for it, and we are, because. Last year at, during a site team or a leadership team meeting, we are looking at data. And reading data, and one of the, actually, she's a math intervention teacher, she goes, um, our curriculum's not working, the reading curriculum's not working. Like, this isn't working, you know, and she was, and she goes, I'm glad that we're gonna, we're looking into getting new curriculum, because this isn't. We should, our score should be higher by this point. And so coming to that realization and being able to. See that, whoa, wait a minute here, this isn't, we've been doing this for how long and we're not making the progress? Like, what's, what are we missing? What's going on? Is it the curriculum? Is it something we're doing? You know, what? What's happening? So I think that that's, I'm, I'm a big one on reflection, and that was good. Um, to see, because, yeah, so our scores were not, um, our science scores were actually in the middle of the pack with the. Surrounding area, but our reading and ELA were not, or math and ELA were not, so that is something that. Um, we're aware of, and we are going to be addressing, or we are addressing, so. Um, and then it just goes into, the next page is really breaks down to males. And. And females were the percentages of level, so if they're level three and level four, that means they passed, so just to. See where we're at on that. Okay? And then it just kind of, again, breaks it down with our um. Like our needs assessments and. And then it goes into our goals. And so we have, again, I kind of, I talked about this last, or last week, about. We have our leadership team decided to make a January goal to see, so to break it down. Um, to make small chunks and where we're at, so we can start seeing that momentum of continuing. And so again, we're. Those are what we're, this is what we're doing. We have our plan and implement word problems, number talks, and really evaluating, we're starting that evaluating our Bridges curriculum. You know, like. We're at twenty percent. Is that us again, or is that, you know, what are the other schools? You know, I know that Granby School District just adopted Bridges. You know, so I have an instructional coach friend that works for the Granby School District, and so I. Text him, it's like, hey, tell me why your scores are better than ours, you know, like, what are you guys doing? Because you're using the same curriculum, you know, like, let's have a conversation. So we were able to talk about that. Um, and the same kind of thing for ELA. We have our new um curriculum. And that is, we, you know, we just did our focus group questions, and that was brought up multiple times, is, I'm glad that we have um common. ELA curriculum, you know, that a K-two, it's not a three-five, it's not a Witstrand. We all, K-five. Kids are all getting the same curriculum, and that's important. Um, let's see what else, um, then, yes, our assessments, we are working with, um. Going through our SBA interims, iReady assessments. And then our intervention, and that's where the bridge, the gap and um Orton Gillingham is coming in to play. Okay, and then our.
Jenny asked about the Orton Gillingham and dyslexia.
Um, and then our EL qualified or EL um students. And again, it's kind of the same thing as reusing the curriculum because it's new. Or newer to us, using it with fidelity or trying to use it with fidelity. And um. And then also, again, with the bridge, the gap, because we're even finding that it's, the phonics portion is. Overall, like, it's pretty widespread, and so um. Working with Mr. Larez, and we've been, I know, emailing back and forth about, you know, being able to, how that's structured. It's for that intervention time. So those are, um. That kind of gives you an overview of um. What we, where we have been, um, and I won't go again into what we're doing, because we really did that last year, but, or last week, but I do want to give you an update. On what, you know, last week I talked about how we came together for the influences that had the highest. Effect sizes and height staff picked discussion and questioning. And so I wanted to give you an update of where we're at on that, so um I've been working with our instructional coach, and we did a walkthrough form. That we're taking to our leadership team to kind of look through, because we really like to see where we at on. Discussion or questioning, discussion and questioning, because some grade levels may be further along or don't need. Or some teachers, for that matter, don't need as much um maybe guidance or um than others. And so she's planning on, uh, because we don't want this to be an evaluative forum, so Kendra's planning on going through before. The next two weeks, because we're gonna take the data back to our leadership team. On the first, the first Tuesday of December, so I'm trying to think of the day, but the first Tuesday, so is that the first? The first. I'm like, looking at you like you're my calendar now, um, the first, and we're gonna take back the data and see where to come up with a plan, so that's where we're at.
I have a question, when you, when you contacted the um, grants. Uh, and they're using basically the same program, and they're seeing some successes.
Mm-hmm.
Um. What was their response to you? What, why were they seeing more response, success than you were seeing?
He actually um did not give Bridges the credits. Um, they had a different program beforehand. Before Bridges, and he um mentioned that um. There were certain co- cohorts, and then um that just seemed to do better. He did say he's there, I believe it was fourth grade, I'd have to look back at the email, but fourth grade in particular was always higher than. Um, but he also said that he's worked really hard with interim, SBA, um, the interim's focus.
Assessment.
Assessments, yes, um, assessments, and so those teachers are always. Um. Looking at um their data, and he has created some. Some assessments that not curriculum-based assessments, but actually standards-based assessments, and he's, he specifically, he's, he's specifically a math coach. So he is constantly working with those teachers and going in.
Comfortable already with.
So, yeah.
One thing Granby is doing for their class sizes, they used COVID grant money. And their fourth and fifth grade classes are all nineteen, that's like the average class size, and our fourth and fifth grade.
Fourth grade is down. Um, I think mine's at twenty-four. I don't know, Witstrand's is quite, huh? Okay, um, my fifth grade is kind of a little bit awkward. We have a one specific, we have, they're about twenty-eight. We just got a couple of new kids, so actually, that's not, yeah, they're twenty-eight.
You, you both talked about phonics being an issue. Do we have a, a separate phonics curriculum?
We've been using, for us, it's Bridge the Gap. So I don't know what the other schools are using, but that's what we've.
That's, so the, of the ARC curriculum has a specific phonics instruction component.
Then, is that the new ARC?
It has a specific.
So it, it, phonics work is. Depending on the grade level, it changes as you go through, but early on, the phonics is, they have a. Um, work study book, I think it's called, work study notebook, which has all of the phonics components in a systematic way to release that. They're also tied that into their morning message, but then really addressing the toolkit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so. Uh, students are struggling with. So, you know, uh, students are struggling with, um, blends, then that's the lessons that they'll be doing in a small group or specific. While some other kids might be working on some sight likes for the next one. The phonics is being addressed within that.
And we completely revamped our intervention because of that, because of those toolkits. Because in the past, we've pulled kids out for forty minutes during that full intervention time. And if we do that, they're not, they're not able to get that intervention piece and doing, and use the toolkits, so. Um, Mercy and Kristen and Kendra really worked hard at trying to figure out. How we can best address, you know, the needs and also serve more students, you know. Um, seeing that the scores and Kevin talked about the upside down triangle, how are we going to get these kids? Where they need to be, and we need to address it quickly and efficiently, um. With things that have been proven, research proven.
Did that analogy, that triangle analogy, if you could catch that?
It's, it's pretty clear and depressing, really.
It's kind of heartbreaking. I know you guys are really working at it. Um, I think you both answered the question. My thought was, I know you guys need, and then you have teams at your schools. But my question was, what is one school doing that's working well? And are you guys all sharing this? But you answered that. If somebody has something that this is working, let's all do it.
And that's been fantastic. It really has been great to collaborate, you know, that's the key and, and. You know, you're right, it is depressing. I mean, when we saw our scores, it was truly like there were tears, I mean. And not just from the, for me, like there was tears for me, but also tears from teachers, I mean. Coming in when they saw their scores, it was, and it was never meant to make anyone feel bad. But it was a, hey, we need to, we need to have a, um, you know, saying coming to Jesus moment, you know, we need to have a moment where we. Look, because teaching is so, so personal, you know, like you're putting your heart and soul into this. And, you know, you, yeah, you, you.
It's not because people aren't working.
Yeah, and so it is just crushing when you see that, and so it is a, let's see what we can do. Because we are.
The, our, 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 our curriculum and how it tracks student progress is really gonna be helpful too, because. When kids go to fourth, from taking a fourth grade test to a fifth grade test, it's not totally apples to oranges, but it is different standards. And so what's the connection? They do grow in scores, so the SBA, they might be at twenty-two hundred and then get to twenty-two. But it's not a direct correlation of growth, whereas in our, our curriculum. It, it's going to track those kids, and I, if I, if Jody has second graders this year, I'm the third grade teacher, I will be able to see. Everything that we're able to do and weren't able to do as a second grader, and that has not been the case for us before. There's been, you know, teacher notes and those kinds of things, you know, portfolios, but it's just not the same. Um, I am starting the, since we were able to use some of the, the first S R funds, I still have learning recovery funds. I'm meeting with the middle school and high school ELA, um, teachers and principals. Tuesday, Monday, Monday, and we are starting the adoption review process. It is going to be, um. Uh, probably hard, especially for our secondary to think about some change. For what they're currently doing, but we need some change. So. But they'll all be part of it, so we'll get there.
Ask you the same question, ask Kevin, what, what, if you could have unlimited budget, uh, whatever you want, you know, you're. Genie with all your wishes, what would, what would you want that would?
You know, that's a good, that is a good question, because what? I, I would really have to think about that in all honesty, because I don't want, I, you know, like that saying of I don't want to just throw money. I, I would want to really think of what would be the best, most thing for my buck.
It'll be interesting to see with your new model for intervention, if that really has effect, then we need more reading intervention. And more people, because we have a lot of kids that need, especially now, need that intervention. Um, I know smaller class sizes, teachers have been ideal, and of course, we don't want classes as like thirty, thirty-five and all that. But John had his research, doesn't get, it's like a point one. Effect to go from a class size of twenty-five to a class size of fifteen, that's a very low effect size. Not that it doesn't have an effect. It has some effect, probably in around the relationships and stuff teachers may be able to build. But it doesn't, but the difference between thirty-five and twenty-five is a big difference.
He says, um, based on that, that, uh, he doesn't, there's not a conclusion on why it is. There's not a larger effect size, because you would think that he has more. He's, but he, what he has said about that is that the instruction doesn't change.
Yeah.
So the teacher that's providing this, uh, with twenty-five students is. Is providing the same instruction with the fifteen student. So there should be more of an impact, but then the instructions doesn't change between the sizes, and so there isn't.
You know what I want? Let's see what I want. I want my teachers to understand, and it goes back to, um, the surface level teaching. To truly understand. That we're not just checking off standards, like that they have their depth of knowledge. Is deep to where they know, and that differentiation, you know, like. As it, and I will say this, I was in an interview one time, and the superintendent asked me about differentiation, and I thought I knew that, and he looked at me, he goes. That's not differentiation, and I was like, oh, I've taught for sixteen years, I don't think you understand, but. And I didn't, and I, I had to backtrack, and, um. So to really understand differentiation, I don't know if. Everyone fully, truly understands that. I think we think we do. It kind of goes back to like the response, the RTI model, the response to intervention. I think we think we know what it is, but do we? I don't, I don't know if we truly do.
Vast majority of intervention, eighty percent of intervening with a student is in the classroom. It's not an intervention teacher, it's not a special ed teacher, it's not somebody else coming in, it's the teacher. So if they, teacher cannot get eighty, their kids eighty percent of. Really eighty percent to know and understand what they need to know and understand in the classroom. That's where you get behind, because we don't have enough people to catch everybody up, if the kid, if they can't get those kids. To the place it need to be.
And I don't think as a teacher, I understood that, as an administrator looking at the bigger picture. I can see that, but when I was in the classroom, I don't know.
So you need professional development.
Well, not professional developments, but, but, yeah, like, I don't know how to, yeah, and I don't know what that would look like. Do you know what I mean? Like, but to truly. Yeah, to truly understand that. I don't know, I don't even know if I'm trying to say it right.
How to do it.
Yeah, how to, because the next steps, I will say, when we talk about, when we have our PLCs, and we do bring back data. What I found is that when you say, okay, the next steps, what are we doing on the next steps? We don't necessarily know what to do, you know, while we, we go on, and it's like, no, we don't go on, but what do we do next? You know, that's hard. You know, so I think, I think that, that's, that's what I want.
Sometimes she'll come up.
Oh, I, listen, I have more. I don't want to write, write anything down, I was just pointing, oh, I was just pointing, like, I want.
I did have something I want, probably you could all address for me, um. Come from a family, six kids, so we were all over going to school. Has phonics been something that's, it's popular? No, it's not popular, yeah, let's teach it. Because some of us kids were, learn phonics, and we taught it to the others that didn't. I know grownups that can't sound out or read and spell it, because they never been phonics, is, is that why?
They go back to whole language to phonics.
I think that there, there definitely was a time where there was that pendulum swing away, and it became a. Right, a whole language, kind of, they're gonna learn more naturally from reading and writing it. And there has to be about, that's what balanced literacy is, really is, there's, you have the systematic approach to kids, unders, learning their foundational skills. And at the same time, they're also learning to read and understand complex text and talk about it, and so. Um, I think in our district, what we saw is teachers were teaching phonics, but it wasn't systematic. And it has to be systematic, because kids have to learn it in a certain sequence for it to make sense, and for it to build upon itself. And so that's, I think, one of the big differences we're gonna see is, is that.
I've thought a lot about that. Because, you know, I started my career in two thousand, and, um, just the shifts that you've seen throughout my educational career. And I think it was lost a little bit, but there was a tremendous amount of research done during the nineties. A lot of funding from the federal government that really did get into reading. And it took several years for people to start to look at that research and. Um, the others looking at that research and then, um, sort of rising that and creating. Uh, or publishing books to address it, and then the Common Core hit, and I think. That pushed some of that research off for a little bit, because everybody was scrambling to address those new standards. I'm not really going back into reading research, and at least I feel like that. Here in the last five years, has been, there is, there's been this major push, uh, to really go back and look at all that reading research that was the nineties.
You have any other questions?
I do, but it's probably for everybody, and it'll be for every school improvement plan, so everybody may be able to answer this, um. So look, and, and I'm not trying to pick on heights, but according, according to this, by. The spring of last year, we had about a hundred and some kids that were at least two grades below. Level, we jumped to this fall, and it's, you know, a hundred and ninety kids. And I know we're making gains, when, you know, as that, as, as you catch those kids up, but in reality. As we, as every year progresses, you know, you're gonna have a vast majority of that number of students continue to be. One, two to, two plus grades behind as they go into middle school, into high school and beyond. How do we get those kids, and, and maybe this isn't a question that can be answered, but how do we get them back up into grade level? So that by the time they reach their senior year of high school, they're proficient to go on and, and into their career and life. And whatever they do beyond. And I think it starts at the elementary, I could personally, but. How do we, how do we, I know we're talking about flipping the triangle. But I still think, I mean, that's, that's gonna be, it's a heavy lift, and how do we do that in a short amount of time?
And what research says you have to do in the first three years, K two. And otherwise that gap is larger and harder as those kids get older. When they're younger, it's easier to address those than when they get to Michael. But the other caveat to that is, making sure that the instruction is solid, just like you mentioned earlier. Class size twenty-five nineteen, if you're still teaching the same way. In, in either of those settings, it doesn't really have a large effect size, so we focus our resources. On ensuring or providing excellent PD around instruction. You know, they're going through, they're helping teachers understand these things, looking at data, this data doesn't lie. And putting the focus on the work, not the teacher, the work, what has to change in regards to strategy and instruction. And that's where you start to see that change, just focusing in the actual building structure.
And I'm gonna go back even further than that, that's where this whole idea of early learning, like, we're starting transitional kinder, we have these E cap classes. It doesn't make sense, I, I actually saw a parent do this, this was several years ago. Um, at, we used to do testing before school started, and they did the testing with a incoming kindergartner. Mom came and sat down, they explained to mom that the child was. Behind in a lot of areas, not necessarily ready for kinder, but was gonna start kinder, and the mom. And the mom was Spanish speaking mom, but the mom got up and walked away, and then she came back and she's like, what do you mean? Like, how can my kid be behind? They're ju, they haven't even started. Like, how, how am I behind? So the, it goes before that, it's like, what can we do with the parents of the kids when they're. Having babies, walking out of the hospital, you know, what can we do in birth of three, what can we do in early learning to help parents know and understand? Cause I believe the majority of the, of parents, the vast majority are gonna do whatever they can to help their kids be ready. And that could just be singing the ABCs in the car, and looking for the red, the red octagon when you get to the stop sign and. And, and parents don't know, they do the best with what they know, but if you come to kindergarten and you're already behind, you don't know. You know, three colors or six colors, you don't know how to say the alphabet, you can't count. You're starting behind, and so we start out with these kindergartners, and we're already, you're already behind a grade level, you haven't even started. So it goes even before that, so we have to. I would like to see us, um, I'm learning more about early learning, I was in a primary person. I'm learning more about early learning and starting, like, what can we do? One, we have kids that come from preschool here in town, not, and come from daycares. What can we do with those organi, you know, those organizations to make sure that they're helping kids learn the gold strategies that they, the gold, those skills they need for what kids? Like, are we making sure these are the, this is our core? Things that everybody needs to know, let's get that information out, how do we get that to parents? How do we get to parents to know, are they walking out, are we handing, when parents walk out of the processor hospital, do they get a set of books? That they can read to their kids? So I think there's, it's, we have to go all the way back.
It's broad, I'll, I'll say that in general. Just generally speaking, it's much broader than that. So closing the achievement gap is this elusive one that. That everybody in the nation is after a few school districts or schools ever execute. And so that idea about closing the achievement gap and. Are we gonna get there? You know, that, that's tough for any district. And even if you had money, or threw money at the problem, there is no guarantee that you can close that achievement gap, so there wouldn't be one. And then as Deanna said, you're, you're talking about these broader themes of access. What affluence and poverty does to a family before a child even gets into school, and what it does when they're in school. Right? And then third grade reading being a huge indicator that if a kid can't read a grade level at third grade. That's a marker of how they're gonna achieve in both reading and math moving forward, and if they're behind, right? You have compounding problems. This is, uh, it was William Sanders out of the University of Tennessee, there's a value added study. If a kid has a really great teacher two years in a row, they could make up huge gains, but if they have. A bad experience or poor teaching two years in a row, they'd fall so far behind that it'd be like a failure to thrive on that kid's part. So it's tough, you, you know, different districts have done extended school year, extended school day. Um, that's where the idea of summer school came from. Um, but it's, it's difficult to catch a kid up once they're behind. Um, and there are historically underserved populations. Uh, there is a correlation with free and reduced price lunch, even acknowledging that those are huge differences. That when we're talking about free, a family may have no resources, and reduced price, they do have some resources within their household. The education levels of parents, right? Partnerships that we can exist, you know, that exist within a community that we can leverage things. And so, um, it's, it's complex. If it was simple to close that achievement gap. Every school district out there would do it.
I would say probably the number one thing we could do, honestly, is put more money into K two reading intervention. Because this studies also show if kids can read, they'll be, they can do math. Like, you don't, you don't normally get the kid who just does that outlier of it, but if they are reading on grade level, they could do math on grade level. So if we have these kids that are showing it as dyslexic, we have this many kids that are behind. Uh, in, in grade level, these grade levels are reading them, let's get more reading interventionist in K two.
You, can I answer your question now that you asked me earlier about what I want?
Yeah.
I want to go and find a school that has similar demographics or a district that has similar demographics that all, they are very accessible. And I wanna go visit them, and I wanna question, and I wanna figure out what they're doing. And. Seeing something that is successful, I mean, uh, I went, uh, to NUCAC, which had, um. A large Native American population, I was able to visit that school, and they were very successful at the time. Um, it was very powerful for us to go and see that, what was being done and bringing it back to a, a different school. That was several years ago, I would like it in the Common Core era. Who is successful with my demographics or our demographics with the Common Core?
They have them, I mean, Doug Reeves talks about ninety, ninety, ninety schools. Where there are ninety, ninety percent diversity. Ninety percent free and reduced price lunch, ninety percent achievement. Um, and so they're, they're out there, they're national blue ribbon award winning schools that the. The federal government recognizes every year. And so there are, there is lots of great pockets of work. Um, replicating it, just like Jody said, that's why they do a principal PLC, replicating it can sometimes be tricky. But, um, that was our whole idea about instead of flying teams out to visit people was to bring people in. Who had different expertise. Um, so.
I have two little things, but this is totally on the side, but since I have your attention, um. I know that I had said that we do heights grand tours in November. Clearly, it's not quite finished yet enough to do tours, so it's still coming. We still, it's just. Someone told me that the other day, they're like, are you gonna tell everyone that it's not happening this month? Um, and I also just wanna plug the social, social media night is gonna be on the thirtieth. Um, and the first. And, um, Angela skiing, her leadership class just got, um, I went and visited them on Tuesday. And they have just sent me their list today of their top ten items that they're gonna, um. Or not speak on, but do a presentation, um, and so. That's still happening and so, um, so yeah, so I think it's gonna be really. Really good.
November thirtieth.
November thirtieth, um, six to six thirty will be light, um, refreshments. And, um, like the presentations, we're gonna have a drawing. And so you'll have like a little passport that you can go around and look at their presentations. Talk to them if they're here, um, get some information. And then go into, as you're going into the auditorium, um, put your little card in and then at the end we'll do a drawing. So there'll be prices. So.
How was the planetarium night on Monday?
It gives you sea thickness, though, if you get seasick. Don't go in there.
We're gonna do it again, though, right?
Uh, that night we were up against the high school game, a middle school game and CRE.
And I had a date with my grandson, so.
But it was amazing having Dr. Tim Stroud. New Columbia libraries were there, there were some new library carts given out to kids and there were some books checked out, which we were super excited about. And so some kids got, uh, to focus on some titles around Astronomy and science and mathematics. All of those things, and so we're really looking forward to what that's gonna look like later and in addition to that. Building a relationship with the Columbia libraries and. Ladies who also work with the science and park in the springtime and summertime. How we can tie it to that. Probably the most exciting part for me, though, was having now. We get high school volunteers to come and help us on those meetings. And we have students now who are in the high school. Who are excited about this work and now want to be trained on how to give presentations, which was our initial goal in the first place. So once those high school students are trained in the planetarium, they'll actually be able to be. Scheduled by teachers. And they will, uh, so they can come bring the planetarium to the different teachers. Throughout the district, the high school students actually present. Planetarium to the kids and create the show for them. And that focuses on the language piece, that kind of language, use of expressive language, writing. All those things are factored into that. I'm pretty excited to see what that's gonna look like here in the future.
It looked really cool, like a pop-up tent, planetarium, right?
Yeah.
It's huge.
Fourteen foot high.
We have those, um, like what the gym has at the high school. But our gym is not as tall and so the, I walked out into the gym and I saw the planetarium and I was like. Like, I was so worried about the AC units, like, that were, I was like, oh, it was really big. So. Okay, my good?
Thank you, Jody.
Okay, I'll send you my list of stuff. I'll keep thinking.
Move on, um, strategic plan process, focus group survey.
Yeah, so we've included a draft, um, of a survey we're intending to use. To, on our strategic plan, um, we're looking at, and it's, um. Opinion based, perceptual based, um. Areas from stakeholders, um, to help frame some of the discussions as a data point. And so we just wanted to present that kind of as a tie-in, um, when we're talking about plans and planning and, uh, improvement.
So we're actually kind of trying, trying it out with staff. We have had twelve groups that have. Uh, met and given input, um, into the, those five focus group questions. We haven't done it with. We're doing it with staff this week and seeing. See how that's going. I think many of the principal, the principals are leading those groups, so I think that, I haven't heard any com, complaint so far, so it's good. We have quite a bit of information already.
So once this, so as you work through this process and pilot it with staff. Is this the same thing that'll go out to the public?
I, at this point, I'm gonna say yes, because it's working well with staff. They're meeting, like, doing prep, parry meetings or after school meetings and then getting together and the principals are just recording. Everything people say. And then, um, the forums gives us, uh. I'll show you.
And it's electronic, so, I'm sorry, what?
Anonymous. It's anonymous. So, it gives us, you know. You know, the little kind of a wordle, like, what's coming up the most often and we'll have to go through and do some disaggregation of. Like, what are the frequency and comments, like, oh, are we hearing? You know, communication, what are we hearing? We need more advanced classes. Or what, what are we hearing a lot? Uh, as positives or as things we need to improve on. But it'll give us kind of that, uh, focus and we can narrow down to the focus of what seems to be the big topics that people are interested in.
And this all digitally, right? So you can, it would be like a link.
We, we will not send the link out, it'll be done with focus groups collected. We're doing a survey as well. Um, Erica and I worked on that today with our, um, with, and Tammy worked on that. And Lisa, today, we are. Almost there with the survey, but we're going to be meeting with the ad team tomorrow to go through so they can refine it. We have four groups that the survey's targeted towards, students, parents, community and staff. And then there's five, three to five questions in five different categories. Leadership, um, instruction, resources, culture. What's the last one?
Uh, we, yeah, leadership. Leadership, construction, culture, resources.
And something we're missing, um, and, uh, so we were, have spent a lot of time, a lot, a lot of time on that. Um, and we're trying to, uh, it's that getting more of that perceptual data in particular areas. You know, students resource questions like around what they think about their school facilities. What do parents think about that? What does the community think about that? Some of the questions are, you'll see very, the same, just with a little bit wording change depending on the audience. Um, and some are more, you know, might be just a community question or just a student question or just a parent question. Um, so they'll be about, they'll be between probably eighteen to twenty-five questions per group, depending. Um, on how many, and then after we get feedback from the administrators tomorrow. Uh, so after that, we should be able to, to share those with you, what it, what, what this survey looks like, to see if you think like there's anything we wanna add in. We're trying not to make it so too big, because if we do, people don't wanna do it. And so it prob, it's a something they probably could do in five to seven minutes. And we will, we plan on having middle school and high school students doing the survey. Um, for student population and then. Um, putting it out to parents, we can put out to parents in the email. We put, be able to put it out to community members, we can put out, you know, posters with QR codes or, or whatever and announce it, like, games and stuff. Hey, if you're interested, put a poster up at the, you know, when you walk in, are you interested in doing a survey? Um, it depends on your system, there's other ones, systems. So. The four categories, the culture, leadership, uh, those are all, um, our avid categories. And then resources is the one we added as far as, you know, what kinds of, of things, you know, what are, what are our facilities like, what kind of things might we need to? So we're trying to add in, we haven't really added in like an open-ended question, so they could put in kind of. Is there anything we missed that you'd like us to consider? Question, but.
The hope is to organize it around themes. And so the first, the front sheet that you shared last time was all about numbers and, and a hard data figures. This one will be more around themes and so you can. They talk about triangulating data and so having different data sources that are pointing you towards a common. Common area. And so it'll be different, different things that you can start to pull together. Or that we can, when we start to get into a session with. Community group stakeholders, I support to think about. A list mentally of people that they would like to see included in this discussion. So when we start to get in there and say, these are the data that we've collected. What are your thoughts about how we improve? That they can start to organize ideas around, here's the direction we want for Proster School District.
Well, and ultimately, what we would want to do when we go through that process is. What are the three to five goals over the next three to five years that we want to focus on in leadership? What are the three to five goals we wanna focus on in improving our culture? What are the three to five goals we wanna focus on when it comes to resources? And so on and so on, so that, because otherwise it's so broad, so then that way we can keep our focus and come up with. Um. Um, meaningful activities that we think are gonna help it make us better.
So we're talking to people, asking if they wanna be involved in that committee, that mental list. What is the timeline? Like, when would they need to be available and what's the time commitment?
So we're, what we're looking at doing, not only is trying to gain. Information from those stakeholders through surveys like this. But then having a larger compression planning session. And it was on that timeline, I think we were looking at. January, February, um, for that.
And it would, I, I, we haven't set the days, but I would, depending, it's gonna kind of depend on how this comes out, but I would guess. Probably two, either we do like one big Saturday or maybe two, like. Um, two to three hour evening sessions to go through, it just depends. Sometimes when the momentum's going, it's good, but sometimes night sessions that are long are really hard on people. So a Saturday, even though it might not sound ideal, sometimes it's more ideal because you can kind of come fresh and you. Get it done and so we'll, once we see kind of what we're looking at, we'll kind of have to make that decision and set some days, set the time and days that we wanna do that.
What's the number of people we're thinking?
Um, if, if we're going to do, um, so when you do the compression planning. Um, if we're going to do it as a whole group versus. What would make more sense is to kind of have five breakout groups that are working in those five areas. And then it comes back to the whole group for consideration, once they've kind of narrowed the focus. Um, you would probably want, uh, between eight and fif, fifteen people in a focus group. So you're looking at, you know, fifty to, to eighty people probably. And we would want to have, we could have older students, um, staff, of course, from the various. Um, branches of our, of our district. Um, ca, board, community administrator, you know, all of those things you wanna represent. Try to represent, you know, give good representation to.
And they have opinions about public education.
And people have them, so I'll give that, we can find them.
Yeah.
Great, well, thank you for the updating other questions. All right, uh, well, that brings us to the conclusion. Um. So a, a regular board meeting will be next, uh. Wednesday, the twenty-third, um. And I think that's it. At this point, maybe a potential meeting is Friday.
Potentially, if, if everybody can make it, there will only be, I think there's a. Maybe a contract for the reptile man and then out of state travel. Yeah, if we can, if we can do a short meeting, just to approve a couple of action items. Um, and then, uh, we still need to make a decision about. Um, on the next Wednesday, it's Thanksgiving. Do we wanna do it at noon or do we wanna do it at the end of the day?
Thanksgiving Eve.
Thanksgiving Eve. Yeah, yeah, and so sometimes we do it at noon and just do, uh, action items.
I have a great action item coming.
On the twenty-third?
I was like Jody, wasn't it? No, it's, it's mental health support for our students, it's good. I got a great one coming.
Um, I don't know, what do you guys think for next one?
Okay, it's nothing you have to, like, have a concrete decision about tonight, but, so as we. As we get into Friday, to know how to post it.
Coming Wednesday.
For that, um, coming Wednesday.
I can be here Friday now.
Or Zoom, we could do as a quick Zoom one. Okay.
A meeting that can happen during a, a lunch hour?
Oh, yeah.
Is it gonna, on Wednesday, or is it gonna, like, go?
I think so, we usually keep it, in the past, we've kept it, yeah, really short, and so it doesn't go over. You know, anywhere from fifteen to thirty minutes, um, we hit it, discuss it and, uh, vote on it and. Yeah, it's a minim, kind of a minimalist approach to an agenda.
This will work for you, tentatively?
I'm, I'm solid. I just don't know.
How many agenda items are on?
Depends where, where my kids are and if someone to watch them, something.
Yeah, that's what we'll try and do.
Like, leave them, so, you know, like, let them run loose.
There's a big, if we do it here, there's a giant building, uh, you know, big room out there, just lock the doors and.
Might be the greatest afternoon with their wife. They might surprise you too.
We'll try to, yeah, if it works for everybody. I'll touch, but I'll reach out with each you tomorrow, see if it works.
All right, we'll keep working on that, uh, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.